Hi Dave. Yeah, hello Dave. Nice haircut. We ready? Alright, I'll call to order the town and Mount Desert planning board meeting for June 28th, 2023. Welcome aboard. We are still in hybrid territory here where we are in person and on Zoom. And let's start off with introductions. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller.
Hi Dave.
In the room. We've got Meredith Randolph. Hi Meredith. And we've got Dave Ashmore online. You're on mute Dave. You can do it. There he is.
Hi.
Hi. And myself Chair William Hanley. Welcome aboard. If you are online, if you could sign in on chat, that would be greatly appreciated. Just we have a record who's joining us even though we are recording the Zoom coverage and let's get into it. So item item two on the agenda tonight, we've got approval of minutes, but we don't have the minutes yet, which is just fine. No worries. And let's keep going. So item three, we've got a couple conditional use approval applications tonight. And the first one is conditional use approval application. Oh, oh, six, 2023 owner is Golds Cove LLC agent is GF Johnston Associates Consulting Civil Engineers. Location is three Clifton Dock Road Northeast Harbor Tax Map 22 lot oh, oh, two. Zone is Shoreland Residential three purposes section six B eight fences and walls exceeding CEO authority. We had a site inspection at four o'clock and was this one advertised and a butters notified.
Well, there's a butters list where eight properties were notified. And it shows advertisement in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, June 15th. And an Ellsworth American on Thursday, June 15th. And there's a public notice. And lots of butters. So yes.
Great. Well, we had a site visit at four o'clock and Meredith. How would you like to lighten us about the site visit?
Um, so they had two demos of the panels, samples or whatever the marks. I guess those were options for the client and the client decided for the taller version of the fence, but in the pattern of the smaller fence. And then we observed they had put ribbon out where the new fence was to go, which is further away from the road, setback further than the silk fencing or privacy fencing that is up now. There'll be some vegetation. It goes, it goes along the edge of two sides of the property down Clifton Dock Road and along.
Huntington.
Huntington. But it'll be there are plants on both sides in front of fence, but it's very attractive looking fence. We observed that the fence is shown on the site map that we got potentially going into the 75 foot set back and break assured us that that would not be the case forever. The seven five is they won't take it so close that it ends up in seven.
Yeah, Greg noted that there where it's so far inboard of the property line that there wasn't going to be any trees cut. Going down Cliff to Dock Road.
Yeah, that's good. Sounds good. Right, Greg, would you like to add anything to that?
Seven foot six fence for that includes the little post cap on the ball. It's rather ornate. Hemlock fence that has no bad side, right? So there's trim rails on both sides. And as you guys mentioned, it is right until the trees remain on on both sides of Procter. Defense along their Z part for Remnant. So the only new apartment is kind of the part that comes on South Shore Road for a short distance just because the corner itself through hunting things that has a 90s and a lot of sweeping lights as they take that corner and forces plenty of lights coming out on to him. I mean, flipping off road. So I let baby perfect time to do that to cover it.
Did you say it's seven foot six?
Correct.
Thank you. And you said a lot of lights coming, you mean headlights?
Yeah. Turn at the 90 they sweep right.
Okay.
Well, coming, yeah, that will coming down and taking the nine years south shore to
Making a left. Right.
So it's just on the on the South Shore.
It's nice to have the fences off the property line quite a bit. You guys are able to maintain all the all the trees and vegetation along both roads.
So is there a reason you decided to make the fence as tall as it? Because if it was headlights, headlights aren't going to be above six foot.
Yeah, I mean, if if you're thinking about the way the car is, it's like on shore. So like it's pretty easy to see over six foot fence if you're Soviet above it. So no, I mean, I think that just by choice.
Okay, well, I'll ask if there's any public comment.
Peter, you're the neighbor.
Going once. Twice. All right, I'm going to close public comment and let's get on with the review. So first thing we need is to find the application complete.
Have we told people that who are in the chat sign in?
I have. And again, if you are on Zoom, please sign in to chat. So we know who are attending the meeting. Right. So any thoughts on finding the application complete?
I make a motion to find the application complete.
Oh, you got it.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion. Oh, I'll second your motion.
All right. All those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph five.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Any thoughts on using the short form?
Yes, Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to use the short form.
I will second using the short form.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manly, I. And then we do our procedural thing of any motion to find to approve the application.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, second.
And we press the pause button and we go through the review of the application. So here we go. I've got the application in front of me. I've got the short form checklist, my reading glasses and let's do it. So compatibility. Then talk about the physical size, the visual impact as it preserves the views across the field. And proximity to other structures. It's not interfering with this and it's replacing an existing fence. So see application. Erosion and sedimentation control. They talk about best management practices and form of the salt fence and hay bales would be used. See application six eight three highway safety. This is going to be constructed well off the public road and exists within the subject site. See application impact on town services. Fence does not require any additional town services. So see application. Six eight five land suitability, there is depth of soils up to four feet for post embedment. Let's see. See application six eight six lighting outdoor.
No lighting.
Yeah. So NA stormwater. Six eight seven, the base of the fence is open, so it doesn't interrupt natural flow. See application six eight eight. Remove tree removal isn't required. See application dust fumes vapors, odors and gases. None of these are produced during fence construction. NA. So the findings of fact are presented by the applicant and the attached application that includes laws that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Meredith Randolph, a second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. And then section six B. And feel free to turn that thing off if everybody's getting cold in here. Let's bug in anybody, but um six B specific performance stands for activities and land uses. They are all NA except for six B eight fences and walls. And that's why we're here. Skip over to that and the application six B eight fences and walls. You know, the applicant states of the fence requires conditional use approval because of its height of seven foot six. It doesn't obscure views through the side as the side is historically contained house and woods and it doesn't encroach upon the view easement across the field. So see application and the so that the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of specific activities and land use. Described in section six B except for section six B eight and the conclusion law section six B eight section six B is not applicable. Except for section six B eight for which the standard has been met.
You gotta check the box on six B eight two.
Six B eight two. So I've got my short form checklist. I've got section six B eight. And six B two, you want us to check? Oh, you need to check that.
Okay.
So the applicant did not check the box.
If you only want to apply.
Yeah. I don't think I have the original.
Oh, I have it.
You got it. All right. You meant the AC is bugging you. Turn it off too.
Oh, I will.
So you're gonna check six B eight two on the original application. So did I read the findings of fact?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Yeah, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Meredith Randolph, a second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
So William Hamley, I. So we are in the shoreline zone. So we go on to section sixty shoreline zoning standards. We get to that and the application. So section sixty one agriculture NA sixty two archaeological sites, the applicant says. Site is developed with residence and not on an area registered sensitive to these cultural resources. They said NA. Central services.
Active submit of map and everything that's
Yeah.
We're supposed to play usually the standard.
Yeah. Yeah, usually that C application. And do you want to submit the map, Greg?
You didn't give a letter in there?
Or
archaeological? What you did? I have a whole topic in that. I got it here.
Good. Sixty six parking areas.
I have sixty five a sense of services.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
They say no services are part of the project. NA sixty six parking areas, none proposed. NA sixty seven marine and freshwater structures standards. NA, they're not building a pier. Sixty nine roads and driveways. NA, they're not building roads or driveways and sixty eleven. Water quality, fence installation is not charged any pollutants. They are prefinished off site. Does that sound like NA or C application? They they said.
The first sentence in there says shall deposit or discharge waters of the state including. So
So NA. Findings of fact are that the proposed use include none of specific activities, land uses described in section sixty. Except for section sixty two and the conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for section sixty two for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Meredith Randolph, a second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Right. And since we are in the shoreline zone, we have to do section five nine. Got that in front of me. So we'll maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application. Will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. See application will adequately adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater NA. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life birth or birds or other wildlife habitat. NA. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See, C application. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. They say NA, but where we submit are submitting the map. Probably should say C application or five nine seven will not adversely affect existing fishing or maritime activities or showing commercial district. NA, we're not in the shoreline commercial district. Five ninety eight avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. And they were not in floodplain. And five nine nine isn't is in conformance with provisions of six A being C of land use ordinance for which the standard has been met. The findings of fact are C above and the conclusion law is that all requirements for section five nine have been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Meredith Randolph, a second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. I don't think there are any permit conditions for this one. So then we circle back and press play. All those in favor of approving the application, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Handley, I. Congratulations. Okay, next.
You pass me the can the folder for the second.
Right there. Yeah. All right. Next conditional approval application tonight is oh, oh, seven, twenty twenty three owner is Northeast Harbor Haven LLC agent is GF Johnston Associates Consulting Civil Engineers. Location is six South Shore Road Northeast Harbor Tax Map twenty two lot five. Zone is Shoreland Residential three purposes section three point four and sixty seven. Marine structure pier ramp and floats. We had a site inspection in four fifteen and was this one advertised and a butters notified?
Yes, there's in a butters list and they were notified. It was in the Ellsworth American. And the Mount City Islander on Thursday, June 15th. For both of those publications. And the public notice is dated June 12th.
Maybe I had a site visit at four fifteen and Tracy, maybe you care to report on the site visit?
Okay. We went to the site and were shown the site of a pier which was or a a marine structure that was washed away in a storm in December. And the the idea here is to replace that structure so that it will be usable. It's going to have be replaced in basically the same location with a slightly simpler supporting structure. It's just going to have one. So when a number of smaller supporting structures were washed away as well, leaving the portion at the at the shore as well as one pylon closer to the dock. Instead of the many little pieces of supporting, there's going to put in one additional pylon in the middle and then the the actual, I guess floats are going to be
Unchanged.
Unchanged, just replaced and actually going to be a little bit shorter than what had been there originally. So
So there's less structure in the water.
Yes.
There are
A lot less structure.
Lot less structure in the water and they're really only adding one new smaller crib work and aluminum. Fixed sections of pier designed to span those fifty five and sixty foot sections that originally had multiple pylons below them. And it's, I mean, and the the owner showed us a video from the December twenty third storm where the pier washed away. Greg, anything to add to that?
I don't think I read much of them. Just describing that the base of the prior piles were banded and full of rocks. And Dallas at the beach level and to add that up to what we have for a single curb. The foot footprint in the power is less. Not sure if the ramp and floating the same boat. But pretty much the same height that we add in course. With fewer touchdowns to the end of cattle air and the flow is less restricted and so is access is improved. I'm not, I think you guys have covered it very well in the site description.
So I thought you just said you're reusing the same floats and the ramp. You guys said it's going to be shorter.
It was indicating less impact in the in the in the peers, the floats and everything's the same.
Line length.
Yeah, I think it was the description of what our impact on the beaches does.
I just used the wrong reference.
Yes, I thought, oh, they are getting these loads because they're already out there. Yeah.
Now, yeah, so the rampant float stay stay as is. So we're just replacing the structures that were in the water previously and washed away along with the fixed sections to the pier. And then and then adding one new smaller crib work granite block.
And you do have Army Corps of EDP programs have been issued.
Okay, any public comment on this application? Now's your chance.
Did you review the previous initial news from it? I was issued in eighty seven. That was in the packet.
We did see that, yes.
So at that point or that night, there was a fourteen by sixteen by twenty nine. One, but then there's two twenty by thirty. So at some point the fault system was expanded. I don't know when. Right show old photos that you must have received. Americans, so at some point one quote went to two. So there were twenty by thirties that were washed away that are now being excuse me, they're being renewed and it washed away. So do you know when the quotes expanded from sixteen to twenty nine to thirty by twenties?
We determined that it was so the product application because they were just doing the year was we could find those four three before they did that. I didn't think that they were permitting to report to them on it because we had photos nineteen eighty, which you and I went to the organization. It's like two thousand one. When the yeah, so
When
one and you would agree that we had evidence that showed those two thirty foot long quotes existed on site long before the organ regulated those scripters, right? Did you guys follow that?
Please explain it again for the board and the
So the floats that are there are larger than script words and you would be able to permit now. We were able to determine historically through photos and other records that those floats existed at least before two thousand one. When the side limits on floats was institutionalized in ordinance. And such that they are legally existing and nonconforming. The caveat in the file of pro permitting a pier replacement. I don't think at the time they had in nineteen eighty seven that they had.
The pier extension on.
Yeah, here it is. Right. And we had that was way before nineteen eighty seven that those were there. We have no idea why they had that in application. That wasn't the focus of the application eighty seven. And there's no you know, there's no evidence of support. Even from even like the sixty, those double quotes were there for us. And so I think that evidence is there's no evidence to the contrary that those folks have existed for the entirety of it. And more evidence that says it predated the order. There's only two thousand two. So I think we're satisfied unless Kim believes otherwise. I think you're not.
Are you satisfied, Kim?
Well, it's not for me to satisfy. It's up to you guys to decide if you're satisfied. It's in your review. I mean. It seems to me it's also not really part of what they're, I mean, it's weird because boats come in and out of the season, but they're not, the boats are in right now. So they're it's not even like they're replacing them or they're they want to recreate this. That's not part of the structure there.
I mean, it's kind of yeah, it's kind of funny. I mean, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of funny. I mean, the floats and the rain after there.
No way to get to them. Somebody's a really good jumper.
Yeah.
You have a ninety one here and follow in there.
Yeah, I remember.
So we see there are two at the end. Hope you looked at that.
Yeah.
The marine structure and also um. So they shall turn, I don't know, ninety one, so there's two there. It's just I wanted that to be brought up.
Yep, that's good, like, so. This photo was taken in nineteen eighty four, which is one to be twenty by thirties and the second one here, because she's two and nineteen two, so. Um, that one. He's um. Then they're.
You tried Google anything?
I didn't, I didn't, no, because it was, here's some backing, because so, the boat and the two floats there in nineteen seventy. I mean, two floats, one boat.
But they have the store.
Yeah, the image, like, we did try to, but like, the USDA ones back in seventy are like. There's no crops down there.
Yeah.
So.
I depend on the season.
And then we go over that, so let's just say. This is nineteen eighty. This is eighteen eighty four. And um. That's a different. Um, so. And we agree that it was in two thousand. They wonder too that that were in the shape of the year.
Yeah, if when I was in, uh, it had been through two thousand. Bunch of. Here's what coming before the planning works over that and there was a moratorium put in and then they created these marine structure standards. They were adopted in two thousand two or three, I think it is.
Dave, are you following all that? Take that nod as a yes.
Yeah, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
You're currently the only one on the screen, Dave.
So you're big.
You're big.
We're looming giants overall.
Well, why am I the only one on the screen? Katrina and Rachel are. Are also on on board.
Yeah, well, when you speak, you stay on the, yeah, maybe we click on view.
Well, the gallery.
Gallery, there you go.
We've given you some modesty now.
Yes. You've been downsized, Dave.
I don't feel alone anymore.
Yeah.
All right, so we're, everybody, we are on the. The preexisting floats, well, let me close, let me just check really quick if there's any public comment on this application as we still have public comments open. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Let's close it.
I make a motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randall, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I.
Please short form.
Oh, please.
I make a motion to use short form.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randall, five.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Yourself, William Hanley, I.
And I make a motion to uh approve the application there, that word.
Tracy Keller, second.
Let's press the pause button and go through the review of the application, so again. I've got the application in front of me. What do you know, a short form checklist.
I make a motion to use a short form.
We already did that.
Okay. Let's do it. Following along in the application. Section six eight one compatibility, C application. Appears no law larger than insisting. It's on granite supports, they're taking out the. That's what they're called, stanchion supports that were into the water. So there's only, and they're adding a new smaller crib, granite crib work. So C application erosion and sedimentation control. Work is performed offsite. On site setting the crib. It's not on bare soil. You know, there's no erosion anticipated, all the works out over the water and they've got it in the P permits, so C application. Six eight three highway safety would. Suspect that's N A. It's indicated um, impact on town services. There's no impact, N A, land suitability. I mean, the. It's already there. And they've got, you know, it's in native bedrock, granite crib. Stays out there, they're adding one more C application. Lighting outdoor, there's no lights on proposed for the pier. And a. Six eight seven stormwater. Uh, I say apple standard met and it's not altering any existing runoff. See application six eight eight vegetation. The foot pier's footprint is located in an area without trees, no trees are to be removed. See application dust, few newspapers, owners and gases, none of these emissions will be created within the pier install, so in a. Findings of fact, the findings of fact are presented by applicant and attached application. The conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A, which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved, or. I guess that's.
Meredith Randolph, a second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
A bash more, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Right, section six B. Section six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. None of these are applicable. I think they're. Yeah, they've got it. Everything indicated as N A.
I make a motion that section sixty, all sections are non-applicable. Really, I don't know, but we better come across that.
I mean, you don't have any chickens, do you?
Yes, well.
We make a join the planning board and get chickens.
So. Let's see, the findings of fact of the proposed use include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B. And the conclusion laws that section six B is not applicable.
Yeah, Meredith, you move that.
Yeah.
Uh, Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randall, five.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Well, we are in the shoreline zone, so on to section six C. Right, section six C. Sixty one agriculture is in a sixty two archaeological sites. And say that the site is not an archaeological site, it's developed with the resident residents and pier. See application. Do we need the map for that?
I printed one.
Great, thank you. Um, six, let's see, six C five essential services. And a. Sixty six parking areas in a, and sixty seven is why we're here. That's marine freshwater and performance standards. So there's a couple. Parts to this, but the. You know, the, the. Applicants got um. Dimensional criteria submitted where they talk about the, the required maximum length of marine structure is uh, is two twenty five and they're two twenty, maximum length of all permanent structures, it's allowed to be a hundred fifty, they're a hundred fifteen. Maximum length of all non-permanent structures is seventy five feet and they are a hundred and five feet. That's because of the grandfathered floats. Um. Maximum width of the pier walkway is six feet and they're five feet. Maximum width of the ramp is six feet and they are three and a half. Maximum square footage of floats, uh, again, with the grandfathering, they're at twelve hundred square feet and there's four hundred square feet allowed. And then they go on to talk about that the new pier proposed with the lesser footprint in place of the originally destroyed pier on twelve twenty three. Uh, last of this, this year. No.
Actually.
Last, last twenty two. Twelve twenty three, twenty twenty two storm event, the seasonal float ramp were existing and remain seasonal.
Seems like we should have some, some other option of checks because they, they aren't really meeting the standards. That's what I mean, but when we do fences, the fence is really meeting standard, it's the, they have an acceptable exemption or only accept. The five has to the standard or something.
I think based on the prior discussion, it would be good if. You memorialize that we determined that the, through the photos and the dates.
I think we should vote, yeah.
Yeah.
There should be a vote with the fire quotes and see the importance of the structure um, is legally is if they're nonconforming.
Okay.
So why don't we have a motion to that effect first?
So I make a motion to find the existing ramp and floats to be legally existing but nonconforming. And therefore grant.
As they predated the ordinance regulating them.
Okay. How are you doing with that? Pretty good. Hold on just one second, yep. Okay, so the preexisting ramp and floats to be legally existing, nonconforming due to the evidence of their having existed prior to the two thousand three ordinance regulating size, so is that too much? I know I added stuff.
That's good, thank you.
All right. We have a motion.
And I guess I'd say green and freshwater structure performance standards.
Things also relevant that they're not being, that they're not being replaced, you know, I guess we, we generally try to get things to stay within conformity, but they're not being reconstructed or something like that, so I think it's an important aspect to include in there. Okay, I'm sorry, I was writing. Uh, the, the, and that um. The floats and the ramp. Uh. Exists, but then they're not, they're not part of the new construction.
Are being reused.
Reused, yeah. So existing ramp and floats to be uh. You found that the existing ramp and floats are to be legally existing, nonconforming due to the evidence of their having existed prior to the two thousand three marine and freshwater performance standards. And the floats and ramp are being reused and not part of the construction. Okay, that's good, okay.
Since we had a motion.
Uh, Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
A bash more, I.
And myself, William Manley, I. And then um. Back to the sixty seven marine and freshwater structure standards, the application. Sixty nine roads and driveways and a sixty eleven water quality, the road. And they're saying N A as well, so the findings of fact for that proposed use include none of the specific activities, land uses described in section six C except for sixty two and sixty seven. In the conclusion law, section sixty is not applicable except for sixty two and sixty seven for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Randolph, second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
A bash more, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. All right, on to section five nine, she's from the shoreline zone. Bear with me, five nine one will maintain safe and healthful conditions, the application. Not five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application will adequately provide for disposable raw wastewater, N A. And it will, five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, birth, or other wildlife habitat, you guys see, N A. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as that, as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See application, five nine six will um, protect archaeological and historic resources designated in the comp plan. See application won adversely affect existing commercial fishing maritime activities in a shoreline commercial district. It's N A, you're not in there. Five ninety eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain. And a, and is in conformance for the provisions of section six A, B, and C for which the standard has been met. Findings of fact are see above and the conclusion law for section five nine. This have been that, all requirements for section five nine have been that.
Yeah, uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Randolph, second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Are there any permit conditions to this one?
We already have the um, let me see and pull that from up in there.
Greg.
Those would be standard anyways, I don't.
I know.
Yeah, so doing our presenting conditions, but they've been probably in, you know, quite a different procedure. But maybe not.
Okay. Go back to the approval. Press play, all those in favor of approve.
Isn't our approval dependent on, doesn't this make it conditional that it's because we don't have that, those other permits? That our approval is dependent on. Those permits.
Well, we can say that in permit conditions.
Well, I guess it's just more of a logistical like language because it's inherent in the application, but how can we be giving approval? Because it hasn't happened yet, I think we have to say our.
Contingent.
Is contingent, yeah.
Well, you have them.
So you do have them, oh, I think.
It would be like conditioning. The building permit, which isn't necessarily a condition of building permit, because we haven't do that, right? You can't condition your approval on. You can't condition your approval.
But well, we would approve and then you can get the building permit. This is, we can't, anyway. It's good. Never mind, let's.
So just to clarify, there is no permit conditions. We're circling back to the approval vote, pressing play and all those in favor of approving the application, Meredith.
Randolph, hi.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Haley, I. Congratulations.
We always come across that commercials, spawning grounds and everything. And I just thought, where is that? We've never had that. Yeah, is there like a map that shows where the commercials spawning grounds, that, that one that we always go through and. What does it say? Like Abels, that area.
Yeah, how do we know where those are?
I think it would be hard to ask them now, like. Yeah, I would think that kind of like any. We maybe be checking that for anything that goes in the water. I don't know.
It just suddenly struck me like this stocks kind of headed towards looking to dock and stuff, it's in the harbor.
I'm not worried on the other side. We might as well just become informed about what that is.
The green one is the next one.
Greg, you wanted your pictures back? All right. Additional use approval application, oh, oh, eight, twenty twenty-three. Owner is Megan Savage, location is A S two way northeast harbor. Tax map five lot, oh, oh, five dash, oh, oh, one. Zone is village residential two, purpose is section three point four, animal husbandry two. Recreational, non-commercial, six hens, mixed breeds. Chicken coop with enclosed run and pen, we had a site inspection at four thirty and. Is this one advertised and a butters notified?
Yes, the butters were notified, a lot of them. And it was, uh, David noticed was dated June twelfth. And it was advertised in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, June fifteenth. Uh, for both of them.
All right, and we had a. Site visit at four thirty. And Meredith, would you like to tell us about our observations? Your observations.
Well, due to apparently some miscommunications, this all exists already. It's the best looking chicken pen you've ever seen. Yeah, so I suppose it gives, you know, it's a sort of a lot to make sure that all the neighbors are happy with it. There's been plenty of opportunity for people to decide whether they have a problem. Yeah, it's, it's kind of in their backyard and.
This, you could write, read the whole description and then.
But it's supposed to be my observation. There were five chickens in the, the outside little area, there was one chicken hiding out inside of. The little shelter and.
It was a very robust chicken coop, it had that heavy wire on it too.
Sorted out all issues with potential fox and raccoon attack already.
Okay, would the applicant like to add anything to that? Okay, is there any public comment on this application? Oh, come on, Katrina.
You are the public.
Mm-hmm, you're the only public here. That would be a no. All right, I'm gonna close public comments on this application and anybody. Care to find the application complete first?
Make a motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Haley, I. What do you think about the short form for this one?
I make motion that we use the short form.
And I'll second that, Tracy Keller.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Self, William Haley, I. And then any motion maybe to approve the application?
To make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second it, Tracy Keller.
Let's press pause and review the application, so. Got the application in front of me. I've got. Where's the short form checklist, it's the green one. All right, let's do it. Six A, general performance standards compatibility. Talk about the physical size, it's nineteen and a half by ten, visual impact, we've got photos and we saw it. Proximity to other folk structures, we've got a map of, uh, site plan with dimensions. And density of development, there's a site plan too even, um, so see application, erosion, sedimentation control. And A, it's already there. Six A three highway safety, it would, the chicken coop would keep the chickens out of the road, so. The application. But actually technically they say NA, my bad. Uh, six A four, impact on town.
We're going with NA on that.
Yes, the applicants got NA.
Especially the off-street parking for chickens.
Impact on town services. Chick, chicken coop and pen area completely contained on the lot, location does not undo a burden in the capacity. For town facilities to provide essential services to other residents in the area. I'm gonna say see application. Land suitability, six A five. Uh, see attached, they've got a map. Uh, six A six lighting outdoor.
So it's the application, six A five.
Six A, six A five is the application, six A six lighting outdoors, NA, there's no lighting. Six A seven stormwater is NA, it's already there, six A eight. Vegetation is NA, it's already there, dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. The applicant says NA. So the findings of factor is presented by the applicant and attached application, the conclusion was that proposed use. Is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
I so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Haley, I. We move on to section six B. Specific performance standards for activities and land uses, so. It's all along. They need six nine, six B one, and a culture. And a. Air landing sites, and a six B two, six B eight excavation. And a six B eight fences and walls. And a sign regulations, sixty sixteen, and a wireless communications facilities, sixty eighteen. And a six B nineteen, animal husbandry two. They talk about that. And that is NA, mobile food vendors. And a rooming house, and a hotels and motels, and a so. Findings of fact that proposed use to include none of specific activities or land uses described in section six B. And that the conclusion was that section six B is not applicable.
Dave Ashmore, so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Fire Dave, so all those in favor, Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Haley, I, section sixty.
I just wanted you guys to know I was paying attention.
Excellent, Dave, thank you. Section sixty. Shoreline zoning standards, it's, it's all NA, because they're not in the shoreline zone, shoreline zone. Findings of fact that the proposal is entirely outside of the shoreline zone, conclusion laws, section sixty is not applicable.
Dave Ashmore, so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Haley, I, so you don't have to do section five nine. Because it's not in the shoreline zone, are there any permit conditions to this?
Come get a permit, building permit to chicken coop.
That doesn't really sound like a permit condition. All right, circle, circling back to the approval vote, all of everybody in favor of approving the application, Meredith. Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Haley, I, congratulations. Okay, so.
We have another.
Other.
I think we have some other. Items, uh, or item for other, item for tonight, agenda.
On the chickens, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks. Kim, you wanna? Introduce the other items tonight, under other.
As you all, on my email possibly, um. Would like to replace the restaurant and lounge sign that faces the deck of the water side. Towards the northeast harbor arena. The size of the sign is over fifty square feet. And she would like to just replace the word, she wants to replace the sign and then replace it with restaurant and market. That looks like this. No, she didn't change it, this is actually, this is a mock-up of thirty-one point nine three square feet showing that by doing it smaller. It doesn't look like it would, um. Like it would. Fit the way the current sign fits. So right now, like I said, the existing sign is over fifty square feet. Now the ordinance, as you know, tries to bring, as you know, um. Conformity back as much as you can and do away with non-conformity. I sent you the section three ordinance, and I, I think Bill actually forward want you that. You guys can allow over the thirty, because any business is allowed thirty-two square feet in aggregate. And no sign can be more than four by eight, this is obviously over thirty-two square feet, it's fifty. Just over fifty square feet. So the ordinance states. Sorry. So the ordinance states that. Under section sixty sixteen. One point one, which is definition, but then it says minimum requirement. No sign shall be changed, structurally altered, erected or relocated except in conformance of this ordinance. Is she altering it? Structurally, no. But she is taking it down and replacing it, and she is changing lounge, which is same amount of characters as market. And that's going from a white background with black lettering to, I mean, an off-colored. Gray, I would say. For this. And so she has been conversing with Bill and myself. And I told her, I said, look, you know. The ordinance requires that, you know. You're not necessarily guaranteed a non-conformity. Um, and if you can bring a non-conformity into compliance, it's not just feasible, the ordinance would require it. But like I said, any business is allowed thirty-two square feet, either a four by eight sign, that's it. Or thirty-two square feet in aggregate, meaning you can have a two by two. Then you can have other signs on like windows, um, in total of thirty-two square feet. This business has more than thirty-two square feet, it has this fifty, plus it has the one that you can see out by the road. And then there's signage on the other side of the building. But that's all been there.
It's everything, didn't it, because how did, how did she end up with so much?
It's been there, uh, the one on the roadside.
The seal on it or whatever is.
Up by the road. There was one there before with ten turtle was there, and then there was one, I think, before that, it said main sale.
But they've been changing the sign itself, and I don't remember ever reviewing that.
But one, one thing that came up to you didn't mention is that. The question about grandfathering of the specific restaurant and lounge sign, and she. Submitted a photo to Kim and I. From the mid seventies showing that the sign was there. And predating the land use sort of.
Right, but I thought with the email that you had sent, said it was really like the exact same time. And I, yeah, I even said the only thing that she's changing is the color of the lettering. Yeah, no, they're taking it completely down.
And that. Lettering, I mean, that's not.
Yeah, they hide a bag or neon, it's gonna be a replacement of the sign. It's a matter of painting over it.
Well, it's not the same lettering, it's like it, it strikes you as a new sign, she, I, I, what. You'd said, I'd say was so exactly the same, except for different color, that I was like, it's like you could have just gone up there and painted it. But this.
Just being removed in those places.
Yeah, and she's changing the text, and she's changing what it says, and that's.
Now she can come before you guys because the ordinance allows, wait, hang on a second. Now that my book fell. Oh, the ordinance under section six B, sorry. So, under section sixty. Sixteen, seven. Which is restrictions and limitations on signs, it says sign limit, no sign except for a banner, shall exceed thirty two square feet in area. Nor shall the aggregate of all signs. On site pertaining to any business exceed thirty two square feet in area unless conditionally usable over planning board is obtained. And then it says in the shoreline zone, no sign shall extend higher than twenty feet above the roof. It's saying above the roof, but. Um, and I don't believe, it's not in the shoreline zone, it's go commercial. So, that's why I forwarded it all to you guys, because. You guys can allow more than hundred square, I mean, more than thirty two square feet of signage. On a property, through a business that's outside. The shoreline zone.
I don't know, I, I think it would. Me personally, if, you know, it's still the same size, it's, it predates the land use ordinance. It's dimensionally not any change. Okay, yeah, it's got a white background and cursive lettering, but. Um, got it, it's one of these rare instances of that, it's been there since the dawn of time. And I would think that like if. There were as compliance issues with signage, the newer signage would be what we would be more focused upon.
Is any of that, that has a square footage actually been added to in recent years, or is it all just, it's always, it's all been, the changing of signs is.
I think A frame signs up by the road have been added. Like the ones where you take out the letters. I don't know.
What about the nor'easter sign on the parking lot side of?
Over here?
Yeah.
There, that was, there, there used to be a sign there that I believe said main sale.
Yeah.
Restaurant. And then after that, Tan Turtle came, and then after that, Emily. And then the nor'easter came, so I think it's always been there. Next to where it said may sail in. On the lawn. And on the other side of the building, I think the signage has been there as well. And like I said, with the exception of an A frame added.
I guess it's just, it, they're saying that signs have definitely been changing. Um, and if she's over, I mean, they clearly are well over their allotted signage, so seems. Not necessarily just about this one, but sort of a review of it. What they've been doing with their signage, because they're over. There, so any of those changes should have been coming before us, it seems to me. But the same question would apply, wouldn't it, to, because they were always over, so when they changed it from the tan turtle to. The nor'easter, that, that should have come, they were.
Yeah, but it's.
It should have come up.
It's not exceeding the actual signage itself, so. Taking out like panels and replacing with new. You know, right, but that's kind of like what she's doing here.
They're not increasing their nonconformity. And some of the nonconformity pre-exist the land use ordinance.
Yeah, she states in her email that.
This line in particular.
Seventy seventy one. She said that a sign reading restaurant lounge on the deck side. Has been on the building since it opened, it's nineteen seventy seventy one.
So, I guess here's another way of looking at it, at what point would you say that it's? If she wanted to change that sign, at what point would you say that that's enough of a change that?
I think.
Well, it says structurally altered under the ordinance.
Yeah, if, if that thing dimensionally changed, I think they would, they should absolutely be here.
But what happens if it was a neon sign? Well, I don't like.
You can't have stop a woman, this isn't eliminated.
I guess I'm just, I'm just like, bit like challenging the thinking of like, when do we consider it like? Is structurally altered, she's putting up a new one, okay, so what do we consider to be beyond just maintenance?
And you know.
It's the same size, could be. She could make it three dimensional, she could.
No, I mean, you've got standards.
Well, I, I'm not talking about like specifically to the code, to the, like, how, how we think about.
You know, like, I think about like when we were reviewing the freshies signage, remember? They have that, they wanted the giant, there's some subjectivity to it, and they wanted the giant tomato. On the south side of the building, like, that's kind of a lot, and. And so we went through the subjective review of that, but. Because that was just so, it was so contrary to.
Yes, and they wanted a signage all over the place, and they didn't have it.
And they didn't have it, I mean, yes, the sign is somewhat. Sure, it's newer, and it's got cursive lettering, and.
Well, see, minimum requirement, no sign shall be changed. Structurally altered. Erected. Comma, or relocated, except in conformance with this ordinance.
So that, even the signs that, since she has, they had too much square footage, when they changed from. One owner to the other owner, and they changed out the sign. That would indicate that they should have been bringing all those changes to us. Is that what changed means? You change what the sign says.
But is it an issue where it's been there before the land use ordinance?
But like, again, the ordinance states. It can't be altered, or relocated, or structurally, or changed, or erected. Except in conformance.
But that's not how we've approached grandfathered stuff in the past, I mean. Things that pre, what about the? Oh, this one particular project with the two marine structures on it, on Long Pond, that the builder took down and replaced. And we demonstrate, uh, the, remember the, the house. Application we had where, um. On Long Pond where it had two piers, two docks on the property, remember? And the, and the builder reconstructed one of them. Yeah, we know that one, but, but we evidenced that through photographic evidence that it pre-existed the land use ordinance.
It does, but it also, keep in mind, the ordinance allows you to allow more sign in aggregate, too.
But that's not what we're doing here, though.
Well, what I'm saying though, is you're saying that when you're stuck on nonconformity.
Yeah.
If the ordinance allows you to override nonconformity by allowing more signage. You're under the sign limit. Right, restrictions and limitations on signs.
So this is pre-existing legal non-conforming signage.
One of the ways I would suggest that we look at it is just like the chicken thing, it's not that we don't want, that we're stopping anybody, just gives an opportunity. For the community to weigh in on things. That that's a large reason why we have these. These sort of reviews is to allow people to object, or, you know, this is gonna offend me or something like that. And I feel like if, if we say this needs to come to the planning board, it's just sort of setting a precedent of like, when you change things. We get the chance to review it. And let the community know, and it's not that we're gonna stop them, it's just a, come and talk to us about it, just. Keep it, keep it above board, don't just go and try to slide things through and.
I will.
Well, she wasn't trying, she actually asked.
You know, I know, but it's just a message to the community, it's like, it's not a bad thing to bring it to the planning board, it's just a. Like, let's all work together as a community, you're changing something, we're not gonna necessarily tell you, no, just bring it in, give us the opportunity to discuss it. Everybody knows it's happening, and you can go and do it.
Okay, so with that, do you want her to submit an application for conditional use?
It's too much science, I would say that that's.
Because condition, yeah, and it says. You know, um, about the thirty two square feet. Nor, uh, nor shall the aggregate of all signs on site pertaining to any business exceed thirty two square feet in area. Unless conditionally use approval, the planning board isn't there.
Well, it sounds like. If she comes before us, yes, she'd have to do that.
That's what I'm asking you, because I need to, I'll have to relay it.
Can I, can I ask a question from the public?
Sure.
So. This sign has been there prior to the ordinances, right? And just previously, you approved a dock permit with bigger. Ramps or floats than what's currently being allowed. So, it's okay for those larger dock pieces to be there, because they were there before the ordinances. But the sign that's really not gonna change is bringing up questions, I guess I don't understand why.
The sign is changing, and the floats were not changed. Floats are out there right now.
Is the, is the shape and size of the sign changing?
The, the shape of the lettering is changing.
Okay, so the, the sign is not changing, what it's advertising is changing.
The font, the font is changing to cursor. And they're changing the word lounge to market.
But they're not changing a rectangle to a circle, they're not changing the sign. They're changing what it's advertising, they're changing the, the, the message.
Yes.
Okay, but the sign itself isn't changing.
The sign itself, the, the sign itself dimensionally is not changing.
And that, to your argument, we're discussing not having a review from the planning board as opposed to what you just. Pointed to, which was somebody bringing it to the planning board, we didn't object to it, we didn't prevent them from doing it, we just said. They need to come and have it reviewed, and that's all that we're saying is. That it should, that things like this should come before the planning board, it doesn't mean we're gonna stop them, or we're gonna put any restrictions, it's just, uh. Put it on the table, and let's, let's all talk about it before it's executed, and that's what they, Milkins just did.
But I think the fear from. An applicant is, in this, in a case like this, is that. They're bringing to your attention a change, and all of a sudden, that change isn't gonna be allowed. Whereas if that had just happened, because the sign, shape and size is not changing, just the message is changing. Then it would have just done, it would have been done. I'm just saying that's, that's the feeling on the street.
It, it's, is the assumption that it's a, it's a negative, that you're gonna get. Turned down by the planning board, and we very rarely turn anything down. In fact, when we come to things that need to be turned down, we get all confused, because we don't know how to do it.
I know, but, but understand, Meredith, that people are afraid to come before you sometimes, and especially in a situation like this, this is a longstanding business with a longstanding sign. The sign shape and size isn't changing, the message is changing. It's like changing your.
And I, I think there's, there's one thing that could cause a problem with this in the future, and that is. Um, it's the visibility of that sign is changing greatly. Um, the, the, the contrast between the lettering and the background, it's much, much more visible. And, I, I, I. It might be wise to have them come. Um, so the people in town can have something to say about it, rather than just pass it over. And all of a sudden, that's up there, and it's altogether different than what it was, and it's a lot more visible. Uh, that's the only issue I see, and, and, um.
But, but historically, people don't come to planning board meetings. Because they don't, I mean, you, you see the audience on a regular basis, people don't come to planning board meetings unless it's something that is. And impacting, and what's would I, what I would see happening in this case is no one would come to your planning board meeting. They would change the sign, and then all of a sudden be like, oh my gosh, did you see that new sign? I didn't know they were gonna do that night, new sign, have you seen that new sign? So it would generate conversation on that end, not prior to the new sign.
But we would have given them the opportunity for public forum, and with two, two avenues, I mean, either sitting here. Being on Zoom, so they couldn't say, hey, look, we weren't here. I hear what Meredith is saying, I mean, look, we're, you know, everything we do, we try to speak in the affirmative and work. In the affirmative, and I think it's just like, hey, look, let's just give the forum, if someone wants to say something, great, if they don't, great. And, you know, we'll, we'll go from there.
I think they're. In favor with, of going with it, saying that it is grandfathered, but, um. You know, the size of it, grandfathered, um, they, um, but it is, it's, it's a substantial change. Um, as far as visibility.
This, if we, if we let this say it was just grandfathered, because it's the same size, it's not gonna say the same thing. That means somebody could pull that sign down and make it hot pink. And have their favorite politician's name scribed across it. Oh, but they were grandfathered, because it's the same dimensions, it's, it's a change to the sign, I just, I think this is. You know, just give the opportunity for us to see it, approve it, and discuss it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it, I, at, at this point. Um, but I think we should hear what the public has to say about it, because I, I consider it. You know, fairly significant change. The, the issue is, is the sign is, as it is today, is not very visible. And I get it.
Yeah, I, Katrina, if you can, you know, convey to her, she don't need to sweat this, it's just a.
Oh, it's not my place, it's not my place to convey anything to Penny's Bernard.
Oh, I thought you were kind of representing her.
Absolutely not, no, I, I am Joe Public.
Okay.
Jane Public.
No, I, I have no dogs in this fight.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, there's been a lot of communication about this between Kim and I and Penny. And, um, trying, you know, and often we try to resolve these kind of things, you know, through that initial. Kim, myself, you know, potential applicant avenue, and I don't feel like we're getting where we need to on this, and. You know, just putting a conditional use application together, I mean. Okay, yeah, we've got some paperwork to fill out, and they've got, you know, images and all the other supporting information. I, I don't think it's a tall order to ask them to do that, you know, we're looking at this again in the affirmative. We've got a grandfather case here, and I think it's just more or less like what Meredith is saying, to give the public a. Chance to comment on it, you know, put it in the public forum, so somebody doesn't. Drive by and then call us at home saying, hey, why'd that happen? So, what, what do you guys, any?
Should we take a vote?
Yeah.
Do you want an official vote?
Yeah, I think we should have a motion to.
I make a motion that we require this issue to come before plan, for our conditional use, uh, be filed.
And a conditional use application be filed.
That's correct, yes.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randall, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. There you go, Kim.
There, I, I want to know. I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, is there any other, other first?
No, there isn't, let's just adjourn.
Got it. Well, Meredith made a motion to adjourn.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randall, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Kim, there's no meeting on the twelfth?
That's correct. And you still have to vote.
And I still have to vote, I. Thank you. Yeah.